So move straight to delegation. So we're gonna have the delegation on behalf of SAVC in by our own.
Was there something? Sorry, Mr. Ryan. I guess, I mean, I was seconding it because I thought we were gonna have an extension on it. So I put it on the second thinking. A good discussion. I don't know if Counselor White wants to...
I mean, it seems like an appropriate time to do it now before we do some best of it. It's a very odd process to me to be when we put forward very clear conditions on person. Um, is there any of whether that's been met? I think I, I thought that we would be, the next time this developer came to us, it would be because those conditions have been met. Our staff and... It seems a lot for him to use that to... Been waiting until those conditions are met.
Uh, there's...
Just a question.
Yeah, no, it's fine. There's different parts to this. First of all, there is no recommendation here by staff to get a second reading today. Uh, there's just a report indicating a couple of items, conditions may or may not have been met. But a couple of other items or conditions have not been met. So they're not suggesting necessarily that we need to go to second reading. Uh, the other report deals with a, an issue that's come up subsequent to that. It's a different request from what we looked at before. Uh, we, I think we all know that we've had a request from the performance to proceed much further today with those particular, uh, reports that they want to have further opportunity to, uh, interact with staff and leave our staff prepared to do that with respect to some of what's being asked for here. So at this point, I think it's expected to be a very brief, uh, informative, information session so that counsel will be at least very clear as to some of the issues that are gonna have to be considered in greater depth when we look at this again.
I can, yeah, I can accept that. I just, I just do want to state though that, uh, I think it's a taken territory when you kind of get into negotiation where a negotiation that should be happening end up at a, with a delegation. Okay. That process to work between our staff and conveying a very, very clear direction with these stuff. Yeah, nothing to happen between staff and developer. Thank you.
Yeah, I think your comments are helpful. So with that, uh, I'd like to just give this a few minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rome. Counsel and staff, friends and neighbors. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We're here under rather extraordinary circumstances and I regret to say that this is the second time in less than a year that we've had to make a request to scuttle our project from the agenda because of a last minute, um, surprise in a report about planning.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Lang, I think if you have just heard Counselor White, I'm gonna strongly suggest to you that you just stick to the points that you want counsel to be aware of when this is gonna be considered, you know, a future date as opposed to what you're talking about now. So I strongly encourage you to focus on the points that you want counsel to be alert to when they're given this consideration later.
Clearly, um, as you all know, when we received first reading in July of last year, Counsel White gave clear instructions both to ourselves and staff to work together to find solutions to a number of significant issues. There were primarily technical issues that are project based. Uh, there were geotechnical issues concerning the aquifer. There were encroachment issues, foreshore issues, affordable housing issues. And because of the sheer volume of things we had to work through, we adopted what we call the workshop meeting format and met on a monthly basis with staff. At the same time, had our professional consultants conducting research and engineering on issues like sea level rise. And I have to say honestly that we had the best level of cooperation in my four and a half year experience in this process. I felt that we worked extremely well together. Uh, these were progressive meetings and what I mean by that is that each meeting built upon the successes of the previous. I felt that we were in accord across the board on, on every single issue. And it would be unimaginable that we would have asked for this meeting if we weren't confident of that. So again, the staff report reflects fully and accurately what, what we've agreed to on this particular issue, which happens to be the foreshore. We have a number of things that, that affect the foreshore in the case of our project. And this is really gonna take some, some further work with staff. And I don't wanna belabor that point. I, I think that we have reached agreement on all of the other things, but it, I don't believe it prudent to bring those to the front right now. We, we really need to get past this issue because this is critical for our project. We can't go forward without this. And so I want Eugene just to speak specifically to, to the technical side of the foreshore issues, some of the things that, that have to be resolved. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I can't, you know, possibly, uh, because we have no time, uh, to actually present all the, um, detailed information that we have provided to staff in support of our proposals. However, I do wanna take a few minutes to go over issues, items that we have, we believe that we have, um, agreed on and set out some questions with regards to the comments made by staff in the reports. Uh, first of all, um, regarding the, uh, the first reading, there are four conditions. Uh, we believe we have completed those conditions. One is stormwater proposal. Uh, we have agreement, uh, we believe we have agreement. Certainly, the last two or three meetings with, uh, staff, they have agreed that, uh, um, we will, uh, control all the, um, stormwater onto our property and, uh, and exit it into the ocean. Uh, we had agreement on that and I don't, I don't understand why, um, uh, that's not, or becomes an issue. The Aquifer Drill Program, uh, we have agreement on that. On the program, it's been delayed, uh, by, you know, both of us. However, the program has been, um, agreed upon. And although the last, uh, I should say that, uh, we have, uh, uh, Western consultants who have actually, uh, provided a report stating that, uh, there's no problem with the, uh, the Aquifer, uh, under the Seaglass Project. And the only reason another drill program is requested is, um, the, uh, the town's engineer wanted to have a, uh, a final, uh, drill to confirm, although he said it was a very low probability that, uh, uh, there's a problem. We don't feel this, uh, this should, uh, stop the second, uh, recommendation reading because that's exactly, uh, what was provided, uh, to the George. They were getting second reading and they had huge Aquifer outstanding issues. We agreed on the, uh, affordable housing, that's a cash contribution. Uh, it's the third one and the fourth one was, uh, we're not really sure about this issue. Uh, they keep asking for a site plan. We've provided site plan. But of course, the issue is that we can't provide a final site plan because we are making an application and a proposal to extend the property, uh, onto, um, Crown land. And until that is, uh, satisfied, uh, we can't provide a final, a site plan. We have provided all the information, other than that, uh, to, uh, to staff. We've agreed on encroachments. Um, we've agreed that, uh, we're gonna replace a retaining wall that now supports Marine Drive and that the shock treat anchors can be on town property, uh, but have to be below two meter level. The, uh, the two issues are really, that we were hoping to come to counsel on, uh, for their general approval was the issue of seawalk width extension, uh, and sea rise. Now, the seawalk width extension, I'll just go ahead here. What we're proposing is for the Phase One, we are extending, uh, the, uh, the basic seawalk a number of meters so that the red line here will be three meters that we can add to Phase One of the Seaglass Project. And our application simply is dotted in this area here. See the red line here? That's, that only deals with Phase One, uh, application. We have no information on, uh, Phases Two and Three. Uh, staff keeps asking for information on Two and Three. We're not applying for Two and Three. Uh, we never have applied for Two and Three. In fact, in our, our last meeting with, uh, counsel, they said that, uh, any information on Two or Three should not be, uh, presented until Phase One is completed. So this is what we would do. Our application is just for the property in front of Phase One. And we would, you can see the, this red line here. That's actually the extent of, um, uh, the, our proposal. The dotted line here is actually the existing, uh, outward line of the, um, the seawalk. So all we would do is we would feather back here for Phase One on, uh, once we extend it. So the basic, um, proposal is to put enough fill so that, uh, we have a clear nine foot width along seawalk. Sorry. And what that does is that provides six meters that, uh, the town engineering, uh, has required. It, it, uh, provides six meters that will, uh, allow the riprap seawall maintenance, the public, uh, pedestrian pathway, uh, bike pathway, seating and viewing areas and landscape. Also, the, uh, the six meters extending out will actually allow a right-of-way movement seawards so that the new sewer line can be installed parallel to the existing sewer. Uh, we were asking, uh, counsel's support to move the sanitary right-of-way on Crown Foreshore uh, so that we could actually finalize the Crown agreements regarding land purchase. Now, the three, the additional three meters that would be required for our project, the reasons for that are following. Number one, the canal provides the aeration area for cleansing the town's stormwater before it enters the ocean. Second item is the canal acts as a required detention pond where the onsite surface runoff is required by, by the staff. The balustrade design, uh, has structural glass and it acts as a dike contributing to the...
So Mr. Evans, uh, counsel has read all of that through the submission you guys provided to us.
So you have read it all?
Yeah, don't, uh, don't spend time on that. Just, uh, just really wanna highlight the, uh, the issues. It sounds like the, uh, the issues that you're bringing forward that are new to us, quite frankly. I was wanting to extend, uh, this, uh, foreshore. If you actually had any communication with the, uh, province or federal government that would indicate they would be receptive even to extending that, uh, into the ocean.
Absolutely. Uh, item one here, this, we have made a, an application to, uh, to Crown and in their reply letter, and I quote it, "The FLNR is in full support of your proposal and remain willing to facilitate the SRW amendment as soon as the request from the town is received."
I think that, if I recall, and I can't remember if I'm wrong, is that pertained only with respect to, uh, SAVC's, um, inquiry to acquire a portion of Crown land. It did not, it did not address actually pushing the, um, the foreshore further out, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I don't think that was part of that, that, that application at all.
Well, uh, uh, it's a matter of, uh, basically what staff has been saying is we shouldn't be doing anything until we come back to, uh, to counsel in order for counsel to look at this so that we can go back to, uh, to the Crown and finalize these agreements. It's kinda like a, a catch-22. Um, uh, they are, we have talked to them verbally. They are in full support of the extension and the fill. Uh, we've had engineering reports that are, uh, that support the, the fill. We've had an environmental report that, uh, supports the fill program. And, uh, uh, this presentation was originally just supposed to be a discussion on, on this widening as to the benefits of the widening and, uh, and for counsel's support. And it ends up being, you know, something other than...
No, I, I think actually that's exactly what we've accomplished. Uh, and I understand that, uh, that staff on staff, uh, is that, uh, is contemplated that there will be some further discussions before the, you said, reports come back to us for, um, for decision. Is that, is that correct?
Well, all I can say is the, um, uh, what's been provided in the reports, uh, you know, basically, I, I mean, we just can't, it's untenable. I mean, uh, I wanna go through some of the items that they have suggested that counsel approve and I'd like you to understand, uh, what the implications are.
All right, so at this point, I think that's just, uh, here from staff. I understand that there's an intention to have some further discussions with these performance around these, uh, before they came back to counsel. Is that correct?
Well, we've had good discussions, and Mr. Lang pointed out for a period of time. But at the, at the time the conversations were going well, we, uh, it didn't include this latest proposal for a six meter change. And that's an important differentiation. So, uh, faced with that, uh, our lack of support for that on the face of it, um, to me, that's part of negotiating is that we're, we're, we have to take the, the opinion of the planning department and engineering and if they, uh, and reserve their opinion. And so, um, so in terms of sitting down, I think that's always available. I mean, we certainly prepare to do that.
I, I'd like to correct that. Um, on our original application for sea rise included the additional three meters. If you take a look at all the plans, that was on Day One. So this is no surprise. This is something that we've been, uh, discussing with, uh, with planning and we're surprised that all of a sudden they're, they're saying this is a new thing.
Okay, that's a second, Counsel White.
Kind of point of order. As I feared, our delegation is turning into a negotiation, it seems. Or is, uh, is, and more meetings are happening. Those meetings, it's clear, so. You might, and the next day on the agenda, I think it should turn into a negotiation.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, okay, uh, we actually had a request from your legal counsel to either strike these considerations or reports today or just, uh, basically just to receive them. And so quite frankly, uh, unless staff wants to add anything, I'm gonna ask for permission actually just to, um, receive our staff reports. Leave it at that for today. That's the five, um, five point two and five point three. I had a jump in my head. I think, is that what you're saying?
So moved.
Yeah, okay, Counsel White, second. Counsel Valerian, on favor. Okay, Miss Carey. Okay, so, uh, we're only receiving those reports. We're not doing anything with them today. I encourage you to, um, enter back into, uh, close discussions with our staff and, uh, we will be hearing from you again on this topic. Okay?
Could I, could I just broach a subject that counsel may wanna consider?
Right, it's very brief.
It is brief. Uh, most other municipalities have a, uh, a, a planning committee. That committee's made up of the head of planning, head of engineering and a couple of, um, council members. And the benefit of that is that the information, the, the detailed information is provided to planning can be reviewed by, uh, not only planning, engineering, but also inputted into, uh, council members so they have a better understanding. Uh, what's happening now is all this information, uh, and it's very detailed. I mean, the KWL reports are, you know, incredibly detailed. And it's all filtered through essentially, you know, one person. And I don't think it's fair to that person being the, the head of planning. And I really think there's, uh, uh, I just think there's, there's some problems, uh, having that and, and counsel might wanna consider, uh, utilizing a, uh, a planning committee that, uh, hopefully, you know, can better view these, uh, proposals and, and provide, uh, reports that maybe run more balance.
That's fine. I already talked to staff about having those reports cut to last in any event. Uh, the, the, the council's quite capable of reviewing those. Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on. Uh, any inquiries at this point? Okay, seeing none, let's move to five point one. The Chief Administrative Officer's Report on the Public Engagement Strategy.
Thank you, Mr. Valerian. Uh, through your, so the report, uh, the council strategic plan, it talks about, uh, leadership and community engagement. And, um, what's attached to the consideration is a toolkit, um, that's based on the best practices for community engagement, including, uh, practices recommended by the International Association for Public Participation. Um, one of the benefits of the, the toolkit in our opinion is that it builds internal, uh, staff capacity to prepare engagement strategies. There's in essence an exercise to go through, um, that in the end recommends a course of action. And in the absence of such a document, we, uh, we tend to rely as we have in the past in sort of one-off where we hire consultants. And one example is the Official Community Plan Update, uh, that is separate engaging component associated with it altogether. And, um, in a practical sense, a toolkit would be used by all departments, um, to, um, enrich the initiative or the plan with an associated engagement strategy. The, the other recommendation in, uh, in the report is for counsel to consider, uh, the creation of a dialogue charter. And the charter is, uh, sort of a document that would be publicly available and publicly developed on consultation with the community that sets in essence the terms of engagement. Uh, so it clarifies expectations to the community and to other folks as well on, um, commitments in terms of engagement with the council and people as well. And this type of documents is, uh, it's developed by modus and, um, um, it is relatively unique. In Canada, I mean, the first one came up a couple of years ago in the town right here in Alberta. And, um, and it's received quite a good, good positive feedback at the community level and throughout Canada as well. And I'll see Victoria and Langley and Swamish have adopted similar toolkits as well. So I'll leave it there and, um, if you have any questions, may I have? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so here from counsel. I read the, uh, the full, um, full document there. Uh, I think it provides, um, good guidance, uh, for us in, in terms of how we do approach some things. And I think we just actually need to use it. I think we've already started to launch into something next week. I don't think we really use this in, in, in the way that we, we should. Uh, I'm not sure that I see any need for your second part of your recommendation of the dialogue charter unless somebody else does. It just seems like a network that doesn't add anything to what I see here. But, you know, yeah, just my thoughts.
Well, I've been speaking with staff about this project, um, that, like, was aware that, that, uh, taking place in, it's, um, it's hugely valuable and you can tell that it's been missing in my, um, mind. Um, because it's, it's great to pull people together, but unless you really care enough of why, why you are and what you're asking of them, there's always a little confusion. And, um, I've... So the toolkit, um, as, uh, our CAO said, it gives us an opportunity to think about what it is that we're, you know, out of engagement, gives them direction and the checklist in terms of how to pull that together. Um, we've been talking about community conversation for quite some time and part of the reason why I, you know, personally, um, haven't pushed harder on them is because I really wanted this toolkit to be in place so we would have a chance to start to use it, um, and work with it and, and, uh... So I'm excited to see it come before, for us today and, uh, and I'm also okay with proceeding with what we have in the works so far for, because that's... Start going with it and, uh, start utilizing it and it'll get...
That, uh, I, I agree. Uh, it's been, you know, the moment has been missing. And, uh, also been, uh, looking forward to this coming forward for the same reason. Um, just, just to help mobilize some public engagement. The only thing, uh, piece that I would add though is that, uh, I don't want to be hung up on this, ended up being a very long report. And I'm concerned getting too hung up on perfecting, uh, public engagement because, especially when it's been fairly warm for a while. Could be a bit sloppy to begin with and you have some attempts with imperfect and sometimes, uh... We, we may learn. Those things are already covered in this report, but it could be completely covered off in the planning stage.
Just to maybe address a point from Counselor White. Um, of our view, the toolkit, we're ready to use it today. But it's, it's an optional piece and from, uh, Marley, this is advice as well. It's, it's nice to do, but it's not an essential part to the document.
Yeah, I, um, I assume that if this was just okay today, that basically what you got there is to start using it. Every time you're working on anything, I think you have to pull that toolkit up and say, okay, which one?
I'll just, for a second, the practical aspect of it. I mean, I think, um, I was wanting to fold this into a verbal discussion of what we're, what we've got in mind for a strategic plan, budget consultation. Either today or on February 2nd. I think, yeah, maybe staff could talk about how we can apply. I think we're talking about, so, three categories, consults involved in engagement. And I think we're talking about involved, I mean... we're talking about involved, I mean, a different strat line, but we can, when we get to five point five, we can discuss, we're discussing how we execute or how we... Is that a great way to go, so let's, let's... We're using it.
So I'll ask for motion to receive that report first of all, Counselor. We leave the second part alone, we'll pay with that. Five point four, bulk water facilities charges. Is there anything you want to add to your report?
Yeah, sorry. We came up with a fifth option, and partially due to comments from members of council during the last meeting, where we could be looking at splitting the bulk water facility or recovering the bulk water facilities charge partially through development and partially through parcel tax. And that kind of scales into, I think the table is in order. So I whipped up the table, and it's got a little bit of extra information there under charges, a bit more detail as to what we could be looking at. These are all estimated numbers, and then if you can see pros and cons, and then there's probably most significant would be the risks associated with each option. As mentioned in the last meeting, staff refill option two and option four are too problematic to, or would be problematic, that was the option chosen. Item number three, or sorry, item number two, because it's creating separate DCCs and trying to level playing field, a larger DCC in zones one and two, and a smaller one plus the bulk water facility charge in zone three, we're going to run, run into problems with a development cost charge program. And then item four, potentially we could, if we distribute the bulk water facilities charge throughout all development in the town, so we just figure out what those numbers are, it does drop it down per lot to 1950 estimated, but it could conceivably cause a shortfall of up to $25,000 in a given year, so we feel that there's likely too much risk associated with that. Yeah, because development, development's not going to proceed, or may not proceed as down in zones one and two. And always the bulk water facilities charges are due based on the development in zone three. So would you have to go over anything more? I don't know if Counselor's already, you know, got a good idea on which direction to go in.
We, well, I know, it's just, I don't, I don't, Counselor's got an idea what direction we're going. I think everybody's read the reports, and then that's what the discussion will be now. I'll just start off by saying, for me, it'd come down to either one or three, number one or number three. Number one, in other words, you leave it as it is and continue to collect the two development cost charges, or number three, spread it through a parcel tax throughout the town. A bit attracted to the parcel tax at first, but I started thinking, you know what, are we then just then subsidizing the developer? In other words, are they going to take the 3,000 off the price of the house, or are they still going to charge the same price, and they pocket the 3,000? I've come down to number one at this point, subject to what I hear.
Counselor White? Ask you a question there. And it was five, it sounds like, was that just...
Well, five, five is a hybrid of one and three.
Correct. Yes. Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, I think for me, I mean, you know, we know there's arguments, quite rightly pointed out, there's pros and cons to whatever one does. You know, arguably, obviously, a development cost charge has to be, actually not a development cost charge, bulk facilities charge has to be paid to the regional district, because basically that's assisting in the, well, the projects that they've got ahead of them now, quite frankly, in terms of making sure we don't have stage support water restrictions coming next year, I hope. So we, you know, we depend on that to service zone three, and quite frankly, zone three is probably the area where most of the development is likely to take place in the town. The, you know, there's an argument for spreading it out through the parcel tax on the basis that the whole of the town benefits from the potential use of water from the regional district. There, as you correctly pointed out, for fire flows, but also as we saw when we had the bulk water advisory, we depended on the regional district to service the whole town. So there's an argument for saying the whole town should sort of bear that cost. But I come back to, when I started really thinking about it, and thought, well, the price of a home up there is going to be determined by the market, in other words, going to sell for whatever that market, that price is. So if we simply take that development cost charge out, if the developer reduced the price by that same amount, that would be fine, but that's not going to happen. We've got no way of ever monitoring that. So we just end up with the rest of the town, in my view, just subsidizing the developer's profits in that case. So that's why at this point, I'm leaning towards staying as we are, but I'm open to your other views, Counselor Larian.
Thanks, Mr. Rade. Appreciate the perspective that that, the market determines, so the costs are kind of relevant, I guess. I'm wondering whether that $3,000 would be put into something else that would make the development more marketable, some other amenities, but we have no way of knowing that. I, I do, I am, I was standing towards option three, and for that reason, I do like number five, and it's a bit of a compromise. I'm a bit concerned about the shortfall that it might create, so I'm wondering whether the nine, I mean, 15 would, could be increased to, just as a bit of insurance, so that we're, instead of 3,600, we're in 11, 1200, just to be on the safe side for that. But I like the hybrid probably because it's not really making the decision. It's falling somewhere in the middle, but it seems like it might be the right, the right spreading out of responsibilities here. The whole town takes some portion of the redevelopment, takes a portion, hopefully we land with the right balance.
Just one comment in regards to the proposed split. With our development cost charge rates that we've proposed, there is a split between the benefit that that provides to existing development and the benefit that it provides to new development. And that ratio is a 43/57 split, with 43% being attributed to development, 57 on existing. We use that same ratio rather than kind of quote randomly picking a dividing line. It's just us trying to be neat and tidy and also to try and provide some rationalization behind the numbers. There's no, there's no particular definite reason that you have to go with that, but that was what our basis was, where that was.
Yeah, I was really waiting to see where discussion went today, to be honest with you. To me, it sounds like our water restrictions discussion not too long ago, just looking at it, is how are we treating the different zones in terms, in terms of water, and are we spreading things out, or are we treating areas? So again, you know, for that reason, I was leaning towards number five, the hybrid.
I forgot about what I was thinking when I first read this, which was that where there's a kind of a, it's more technical when it comes to the restrictions, it's a bit more technical, and from the point of view of, you know, seeing how plenty of water, why am I not able to water my plants, or is plenty of water in the acre? So in that way, I mean, I've generally been okay with splitting up, with, you know, some mitigation of that splitting up, but when it comes to costs, I guess I don't see it the same way. I see the water supply issue, it's, we are, we are one entity here, we should look at this holistically, so that way, in favor of spreading a little bit out, with the understanding that if zone three goes to restrictions, that there'll, certainly there'll be some form of compensation. We talked about that in a form of non-party order for their use. It's not fair to say everybody pays the same, but then, you know, get the water that you need. So that, I think for me, that was the distinguishing between actual supply and overall cost.
There are a couple points. I also didn't come into this meeting with my mind firmly made up on one option. I'll go back to the last time we discussed this, which is, back to my opinion, that really doesn't make a lot of sense. Basically, it's really a problematic situation to grapple with. But it doesn't, upon hearing the discussion here, I really don't think it makes, I don't think we should be trying to address a problem that doesn't make sense with something else that doesn't make sense. I agree that development charges among everybody in the form of... One problem with another problem...
I guess what I was going to say is I almost feel like I needed a bit more discussion, because I really don't feel like I could, there's an argument from both sides.
Just ask a question, kind of conversely to Mary's question. If there's passing on costs, it's 3,600 dollars, affordable housing in most of the development being in zone three, is that, is it essentially adding some cost, making it less possible to provide affordable housing? There's kind of the front side, is there any lead to that?
Yeah, I mean, that went through my mind as well, but that's why I sort of made the statement that I think the house sells for what the house sells for, I mean, it's what the market is, they're going to charge whatever the market is, and, you know, I guess, you know, the question, and you're quite properly raising, is, you know, are we forcing up the cost of housing and therefore making it less affordable? That's certainly a charge or obligation to see, I mean, in Vancouver, for example, that various charges and that of pushing it out of sight. And it's a valid point, but of course, it would only pertain to that zone, so the housing in any other part of the town might have been not being charged that extra amount in any event, I suppose, so. In fact, there's two, there's one subdivision, 15 lot, that's just come onstream, there's another one about to come onstream, they don't seem to be deterred by development cost charges, unless I'm mistaken, David?
The one that just came onstream dodged the bullet with the charge because of when it, when they applied for it. The other one, which is, that's Sunnycrest North, is what we call it. The other one is Parkland Development, and that's the one that, you know, really got pushed back at this point because they're the next one in line. I also want to be clear on this, I can't recall if I've mentioned the report, if you mentioned it on this table, is that we used, rather than coming up with a different rate for every separate category, we use kind of an equivalent lot, and so we're just comparing lots. These charges are also applied to industrial, commercial, institutional, based on square foot, or square meter areas, and so it's not just residential subdivisions, it's other types of development, just the same as our development cost charges, our own development cost charges. These bulk water facilities charges are charged to residential as well as commercial.
Refresh my memory, please. We, as well, say we did select option one, the 3,600, there's also a DCC paid to the SCRD, and what, $2,000 that...
The plus. So the, this bulk water facilities charge is remitted to the regional district, and then it's imposed through our agreement with them, the bulk water agreement that we have with them, whereas the other one, the water DCC is, I think it's roughly $2,200. I don't believe that development, developers generally distinguish between one development cost charge and another. They look at, so for a single lot, all four categories of development cost charges are around, I think, $18,000. That excluding the bulk water facility charge. So there's, so it'd be $18,000 for a lot down here, and, you know, 31, or sorry, 21 up top.
Anyone else wants to weigh in? I don't have a super passion about this, but I do, I guess, appreciate that staff hasn't made a recommendation, because they want us to figure it out, but I see an implicit recommendation, see an implicit recommendation, number five, trying to find some middle ground, and so I, I do like the idea of sharing. So I'd like to make that motion, so that we go with option five, and that goes.
So if that one moved to option five, is there a second, Counselor Sanjay? A good old Canadian compromise, isn't it? He's in South Africa. Yeah, okay, so I've stated what my thought processes were. I probably won't oppose your, out of your motion, it's arguably, it's hard to be sort of a sharing up there. Is it more complicated for staff in any great fashion? Is it...
Probably, I mean, by far the easiest is number one, just as it's, you know, one for one. Maybe I might defer to finance on that. Take the most of it, I don't do that very often.
So just to be clear, like, the process right now, so when it comes in, wants to develop two lots, you basically say to them, wow, this is the development cost charge for plus the bulk water facility charge, right?
Correct.
So it would be really saying the same thing, but just with a different number, I guess?
It's a different number, yes. Sorry, I didn't mention that, that the regional district development cost charges are being increased, they were increased a while ago, but effective date is March, and so the original report I gave you reflected around $2,400, and I was on the understanding that that reflected the new rates, that they had actually put them into effect for six months, and so that raises to March, which is...
Do you wish to add anything?
Well, I mean, anytime you add a hybrid version, it's going to require a little bit more calculation... more calculation. They're not detailed calculations, but on the flip side of that, then you, whenever you're trying to explain them, whether it's at a budget meeting or whether it's with a developer, you have to kind of go through that, you know, the math and so the calculations are not difficult, but sometimes the explanation would be equally challenging.
Counselor White?
I appreciate the simplicity of option one. Just want to hear you narrow the noise through, you opposed something, so I can represent your misgivings and misintentions.
Yeah, I just kind of figured that. All right, so I'm going to have a call to question. I am going to support the motion. My rationale for doing that is that part of the cost, I don't want to relieve the developer of the full cost, but I don't really honestly believe it'll get passed along, quite frankly, to the buyers. No disrespect to the developers, it's just the nature of the market, that's all. Secondly, that the whole of the town ultimately does benefit from the supply of water from the regional district, and as to the reasons I pointed out earlier, so with that, I will call the question in all the favor. Opposed? Little Counselor White? Harry, Counselor White?
You convinced me. Yes, David. The one piece left that bothers me a little bit is that I haven't provided, I haven't provided an explanation adequate to have it make sense, and I know, Counselor White, you expressed that. Do you want me to have another crack at it? Do you want to have a conversation later, or you don't, don't you care? I mean, sorry, don't. The history of the regional Yes. I think, yeah, I think I'm, I don't agree with it. I know it was a long time, difficult negotiation, so. Yes, but if you do want to chat about it, feel free to. Knock, knock, knock.
Thanks for that. So we're just going to move on to type five, five, and also staff ideas, and I'll leave it to you what staff stays or doesn't stay.
Yeah, at this point, I think you and I should be sufficient. Call it a dust.
Okay, so who's going to lead this one? Yeah, I asked for it to be put on the agenda just because I started thinking about we weren't going to talk about it again until February second and trying to do an engagement event on the night. It wasn't a lot of time there. I appreciate that council has decided to jump into this, and I think we feel like we have some ownership of it because we decided now's the time to, to talk again and ask some questions, but I'm sure the staff felt well, in combination with the engagement. The toolkit that we just looked at, maybe we just get a briefing from staff about what they have in mind based on our last discussion and what decisions to make in terms of what we go for, because we have three weeks till we have a whole bunch of people here with that, and so let's make sure that we give the proper guidance and settle on ourselves on what we're going for. So I think that's the first thing, is which category and tool that we really wanted to use, and so I guess it's question Friday.
I'm not really certain what we're doing on February ninth, based on, we walked away at the last meeting, I'm trying to go back to my notes and what we were having. In a general sense, my cursory understanding is that council was hosting an event to inquire from community members what they wanted to see in terms of priorities, strategic planning, associated with that, for a bunch of considerations. Because I was working, obviously, in a toolkit report, my thinking at the time was, this would be a good project to run through it. And even this week, I think we need to know first what the event is like before we even run it through the toolkit, but it's a natural thing to do that.
I would like to just make a couple of suggestions, and you can tell me if I'm, council can tell me if I'm off base or not, but I imagine that February second, as a council, we kind of roll up our sleeves, we each come with five or six strategic priorities, and we would create a very draft, one-page outline, a highly visual outline, very draft, with help from staff in preparation of the ninth. And when people come on the ninth, they would be able to see the work to date that we've done, which of our priorities were in common as a council, what kind of what we're, where we were thinking, and to at least have a starting point, because there's nothing worse than going to a meeting and there not being an agenda, kind of. So when people came in the room, then that's where the engagement comes in. You could see, whether you were here on the second or not, you could see, oh, okay, so this is sort of where council's thoughts or discussions are so far. We could ask for help in different ways of engagement to prioritize, to add, to give us thought. There's lots of ways verbally or visually that we can kind of take it from there, but I think that you have to, my thinking was to help give people a few, a bit of parameters so that the meeting on the ninth was as effective and as efficient as possible, as well as our communication leading up to that.
That could definitely work. I could support that. I would also like to see us promote this before the second though, too, because we're going to have to, it's not quickly. And definitely, you know, there are people that are looking for their ideas and that kind of strategic. This is still at a stage where whatever happened to some consider it. Hopefully, we could pause to consider that. For public to have that kind of at this stage. Yes, and consider what kind of ideas people have. Maybe people won't come up with their own ideas as much, but will want to see these councils and prioritize them and write feedback, and we've got a lot to talk about.
But I'm happy if you will.
Add to, maybe we could present some very basic budget information, even just a basic presentation. Really, I think, an important question when we're speaking of input is how much is really left that's not the big operation, it is, or anything. We kind of got down to that in one meeting last year where we went through a big laundry list of items that we could
What there is the, maybe, after reading this, thought of the eternal approach, which is not to prejudice this at all, and be involved, invite early input from diverse perspectives. But I, so I was going to bring that up as a bit of a devil's advocate, but I tend to agree we need to have something, and whether it's completely out too much or not. So I agree with, sort of, Senator Jacob, that we can pull something together. So I guess we can do that on February second. Does that give staff enough time to, I mean, it wouldn't be nice to put this out, put this draft list out, along with the invitation to come and provide input at least a week, but we do, we come up a list on February second, it's not five or six days in our best case scenario to get it out there. So do we want to hand it out? Do we want to have that list ready at the door? People come in and they can maybe mark it up priority-wise, or? Want to just keep that in our, keep, have that discussion so that we all know at least where each other are, because we have already set that out, and then take the input and add over mine, and bring it up as a weekend, I'm trying to take our partial list or our draft list and turn into something communicated and it can, it's nice indeed.
Mike, it's Friday. We need to have a message to put out. I agree with Selena, there's, you know, there's levels of communication, there's nothing stopping us from this week, other than paper deadlines and radio deadlines, to start the invitation for people to come. And as we get more details, we can upload them to our site, utilize Facebook, we can utilize a survey, a very simple, three-question survey to get more broad input from people if we're looking for that. We can use the evening of the ninth for more specific input, so that, you know, we have a little bit of a framework to work with. But I think, yeah, the general idea of why we're asking people to come, we basically, we can get that message out this week, and that is, we have three years left of our term as a council, we have a brand-new term, you know, and we want to take a fresh look at our strategic plan, given that we're going into budget process, and really know what our priorities are for the next three years. We're all going to give our input as counselors, and we'd like to hear people's input as well. If you want to be part of this process, then communication is a two-way street. Tell us, fill out the survey, come on the ninth. We're inviting you to be part of the process.
Mr. Mayor, the, I'm still not there. And that, my sense is that we're balancing between our goal and our promise, to use the elements of the strategy here. We just want people to know that you're consulting a budget and a strategic plan, and we want to put, that's just an information piece, and I'm hearing more of a consultant involved. To consultant involve, we need more material so people have something to consider and provide feedback on. I think that's the part that we're missing. It's, what exactly we're doing is more clear, but I acknowledge that, as the Council White says, pointed out, that it won't be perfect, and for a few times we use this, and we should use it, because it's the only way we're going to get better at it. But on the face of it, there's a bit of a disconnect between what we're trying to do and what would be the best practice. I wanted to suggest that over the next few days, one or two counselors that wanted to leave this piece, meet with staff, and we just have a go at trying to develop a bit of what this could look like. And I think I flashed this out a little bit, this setup, what it could do to do that. Over the next few days, you could sort of sync through, or you've seen the toolkit, and then we can do some work on our end, and we just spend an hour or two just trying to craft a draft for council, they can see there as well. That's just one suggestion to do as well.
I'll just grant one more thing that probably would require some lead time, and we had a bit of discussion whether this would be facilitated by third-party, and then I read the toolkit, it says council members, and it should promote attendant observe engagement activities, but should not act as a participant or try to influence the input being we're going to engage a facilitator, two weeks is probably the bare minimum, so we can work on, take it offline a little bit to flesh out the content, but I'm just wondering what kind of council just think about how we run this. Do we want to sit and watch a facilitator engage, and sit back and listen to maybe pipe in, do something other way that we want to take charge of it and try and listen?
While that's sort of advice on the toolkit, I think in the context of that, depending on what role council wanted to play in that, if you're the, they invite her, it's clear that you want to have a conversation, I think there's an expectation that you'll be the one conversing, and therefore facilitate in the conversation. So I will sort of rule that out altogether.
Can I just apply by the seat of our council? I heard the CEO.
That's a player to that. The two counselors over there?
We're happy.
Yeah. Okay, well, okay, all right, any questions before we move on? And if not, just ask for motion to adjourn, then, Councilwoman, all in favor, thanks Terry, thanks, guys.